It is two o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, November 7th work session for Glen County Board of Commissioners. I've asked Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our pledge today, and I will lead us in our invocation. And if you stand with me, please. By the way, just thank you for the privilege of serving you in this most beautiful place in the world. We pray that you would just guide our deliberations, that you would just give us discernment in what we hear and what we do. We thank you for our first responders and the job that they do for our community. We just ask that you would keep them safe as they seek to keep our county safe. Guide us and be with us as we go through this day, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Everyone, face the flag hand on heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
I would like to welcome our partners from the city of Brunswick that are here with us today. Thank y'all for coming and being a part, and we appreciate that. First on our agenda today is an introduction from Ally Christensen on the, and I'm not saying that right, the Ally Christensen of Hope 1312 Collective. And if you would like to come forward, Commissioner Rofoski, did you have any words of introduction?
I do not. I was asked by Commissioner Martin, as you know.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you all so much for your time today and for your service. My name is Ally Christensen. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. My profession and expertise is in childhood trauma. I have served as a clinician in this area in child welfare for the past 17 years here in Glen County in various capacities. Today, I come to you as the Director of Hope 1312 Collective, a local nonprofit that is seeking to rewrite the story of child welfare here in our community. I, having served here over the past 17 years, had known the stories of kids within the child welfare system and the families, and walked with them faithfully, and continued to see a misfire of resources from those that were well-intended and well-resourced in our community, and then actually not seeing much change in the lives of children and families that were most vulnerable in our community. That experience led me to starting the Hope 1312 Collective in 2017. Our mission is simply to engage the church and the community in the story of child welfare to provide tangible hope. And I'll give you a packet of this information before I leave today. But essentially, what we're doing is we have a close partnership with the Department of Family and Children's Services. I say that to say that we walk relationally with them through the hard and through the thick of it, and we are there most every day at their side. And we also do not take any state or federal funds. So that allows us to truly be a third party in this story to advocate and have voice for most vulnerable children and families. We look for needs as defined by the department and the children and families that we serve, gaps in the system, if you will, and then we find best practice across the nation and communities similar to ours, bring those programs and platforms here to the community. One such program, and you'll see in this packet today, is the Care Portal technology, a technology that we launched under Judge Roundtree several years ago, to be able to allow DeFacts caseworkers, when they go and investigate homes, to enter needs of children and families in that system, in that technology, and send them to our community partners and churches that want to do something about the most vulnerable needs. We've been able to keep children out of care. Just this year, as of August, $61,000 of goods and services were donated to children and families just by the church and the community, being the church and the community. But those goods and services were not misfired, right? They actually changed the trajectory of these cases as defined by the court. So we are very excited to have that partnership. Annually, we serve about 40 kids from our community in a trauma-informed summer camp program where they are reunited with siblings and receive respite and top-level trauma-informed care that you simply cannot find in this community. Those children are then mentored throughout the year, monthly. We currently are working to create a trauma-responsive Glen County. And you might wonder, well, why does that matter, Ally? And I recently heard an African proverb that says that when children are not welcomed into their village, they will burn it down to feel its warmth. You all are well aware of the increase in juvenile crime in our area, and I simply think we have to move upstream and caring well for the most vulnerable. And we are training across sector. This year alone, we've already trained 1,080 community members across all sectors, and what it looks like to actually bring these children and families into healing. So not just to know it, but to do something about it. And we are seeing tremendous movement there. Just last week, we launched an app on your phone for foster families and kinship families, those stepping in to take children into their homes, that connected 80 businesses, local businesses, that said, you know what, when someone here says, "I will take this child into my home," I, as a business, will partner with them. So we're trying to raise awareness and bring the community into the story. We also launched a DeFacts Wellness Program a couple of years ago to try to combat the turnover rate in DeFacts, as we know that that directly correlates to how long our children are staying in care here, which PS is past the federal mandate. The last year alone, we had 500 volunteers say, you know what, child welfare here and changing the story in this very beautiful place, but there are some very ugly things happening in child welfare, just to be frank. 500 volunteers that said, you know what, I want to be a part of rewriting that story with you all, to the tune of over $400,000 in volunteer hours donated through Hope 1312 Collective. I say all that just to give you some background as to who we are and what we do and why I'm coming to you today. Very concerned about the state of DeFacts and leadership here in our county. I am a partner in that I will have hard conversation with you for the sake of freedom and healing for the children and families that I serve. So this is nothing that I have not already talked to the department. I've been to the Glen County Board. I serve on Governor Kemp's Board in child welfare, and he is well aware of my concern. And so I wanted to bring it to you today. And I say we are rewriting the story because I hope you can hear from these things and programs that we do, that I'm by no means pointing the finger, but I'm in this game and want to invite you to leverage your impact as well. Because in the past 14 years, we have had 11 DeFacts Directors here, 11, and we are currently without another one. There is a DeFacts Director vacancy yet again. The caseworker turnover rate, I ran the numbers the other day, it's insane. We currently have three caseworkers at DeFacts right now. These are my friends and fellow co-laborers in this work. They are good people. They cannot continue to do this. And they're leaving before they even start. They're leaving in training. So our turnover rate is astronomical. We're unable to open new homes for children. Most of our children, 80% of them, are having to leave this county, 80%. The tax dollar amount of running the road to visit those children is not good. But we can't open new homes because there's not capacity to care for those. Our reunification rate, which is what we're going for as a state, and what we should be looking at is children getting back with their families, is 8.9%. As I mentioned earlier, the permanency rate, meaning how long it's taking these cases, they're staying in care, in DeFacts care, longer than mandated by the federal government, up to 36 months in care. We should be doing something around 15 months. And I say "we" because we all have a part in this. So today, and I think many organizations, the school system, would tell you that there's a lack of removals because, again, of the capacity issue here. So my invitation is, one, let's talk about it. Invite me to the table as a co-laborer in this space, as someone who has vision and dedication to these children and families and to the department. I'm not going anywhere. I want to be a part of solutions, but I simply cannot continue to ask people to enter this story when we have these kind of vulnerabilities present. It is my core belief that without leadership and accountability at the DeFacts level, especially with a leader that's longstanding here, that we have no accountability, and that our children, all vulnerable children here, are at increased risk. And that burdens my heart to the point that some nights I cannot sleep. So I'm just asking you today, Commissioners, to get curious. What is the root cause? Why can't we keep leadership here? Why do we have the turnover rate? Why are the outcomes what they are? And know that you have a resource and a friend and someone that's committed to this work, and lots and lots of community support. I represent over 15 churches that are giving regularly and want this done. You hear the amount of volunteers, the amount of children that we're serving, but we want to be a part of seeing change and healing and hope. Hope 1312 comes from a verse in Proverbs that just says, "When hope is deferred, it makes hearts sick." And that is what I've seen time and time again with our children in child welfare. We're promising them, when they come into care, that things will get better, and it's simply not. We are doing further harm. But that verse goes on to say, "But when longings are fulfilled, there is a tree of hope and tree of life." And for me, that speaks to the incredible potential that we have for generational change in this community, but we have to know what we're looking at and the harsh realities around the current situation. So thank you for having me today. I'll leave you with this packet of information, and if there's any further questions, I'd love to entertain this.
If I might, I just want to thank you for coming, Ally. You give me hope that they're both working on this as well. And I say that "as well" because our last presentation confirmed what I'm talking about.
Yes.
But I do want to find out some of the churches that I support.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a list in this packet, Community Church, the Chapel, the Methodist Church on the Island, Wesley, Rema, Lighthouse Baptist, both of the Baptist, First Baptist and St. Simon's Baptist. I'm always hesitant, I'm going to forget somebody and hurt somebody's feelings.
That's enough. I'll just.
Okay. And we do serve in Camden County and McIntosh as well, simply because of the transient nature of our cases. Many of our kids, if we could get them in a Camden County home, that's a win for all of us. And you'll know that Camden County and McIntosh County are currently serving Glen County caseworker positions right now, which has been pulling, it's just, we need some help. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, I do have a couple of comments. So we did receive an email, and you all received an email from one of the foster parents with some concerns as well. So we forwarded that to several of our state representatives, State Senator Hodges, Representative Townsend, and also Sam Tossenson from Governor Kemp's office. I got a call, actually, yesterday from Sam, inquiring a little bit more as to what we knew about the current kind of state of DeFacts here locally. I didn't realize, I knew that they had a lot of turnover, right? I was a director for 14 years. But he did say that he talked to Sam, talked to someone at the Department of Human Services, which DeFacts falls under, and he was going to follow up with that person. In fact, I just texted him. Now, it'd be good for them both to watch this presentation from today. So
Yes.
We are aware of it, and I agree with you. We probably need to do a little bit more inquiry into it. But one of the things I did recommend to Sam, to mention to the Human Services person, was to come down and do an assessment, really, you know, try to do a temperature survey to determine really what the root cause is and why they cannot keep a director here.
Absolutely. And I would highly recommend, and I've recommended this to representatives as well, but to go back to those directors that have left and interview them and ask them why. They're open. And same with our foster families that we used to have serving here that have left. I'm happy to provide that information. They want to be a part of this solution as well.
Question. Do we need to bring Glen County back? Are you sure we have three?
Yes, sir. Closer to 20, 25?
Twenty-five. How many do we have?
We have three.
Say that again.
Three. And now, that's not those that are out on investigations, but that are managing cases right now. There are three. Yeah. Not employees, but case managers managing kids that are currently here. And many of them are having to travel to Atlanta to see kids because we don't have enough placement here. So we just got to get upstream a little bit.
The local, isn't there a local board?
Yes, sir.
Don't we appoint people to that board?
I believe so. Yes, sir. That might be a good place. I've spoken with them about my concern, and those meetings, I believe, should be public. I just, I think that if people knew more about what was going on, that they would be willing to be a part of it. But that might be a step as well.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Twenty to 25 caseworkers, and each worker would have one, two, and three cases at a time, on average.
Well, nationally, like a healthy caseload is around 15. But we've got people that are working, you know, 60 hours a week on call. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right. We appreciate you coming in today. That was enlightening, and we'll try to pick up this ball and go with it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, item two, I'd like to defer.
All right. That's the discussion regarding the accommodation tax. I'll have a motion on the floor to defer that to a future meeting. Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, second by Commissioner Rofoski, to defer that. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. In Engineering Department, I'm going to ask you to wait just a minute, and we'll move to item number four, to receive a presentation regarding the Rise Rizley project. And there's, I'm at a loss for your name again. You told me, Kevin Krulwich is here to talk to us, and then, yes.
I'm just going to start, y'all.
All right. You start, Ms. Hamilton.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do want to say, first of all, thank you so much for allowing us to come before you. I know that you know that approximately a year ago, I came out before and did a presentation to you regarding our Rise Rizley initiative and project that we have going on. And so what I wanted to do was to come back before you again, and I'm going to have, and we have several members of our team right with us, we have Mr. Don Meyer, Ms. Rita Falding, and of course, Kevin, who just introduced himself. And so what I wanted to do was to bring you up to date as to exactly where we are now. Back then, we came and there was to discuss Rizley, the purpose of it, and how it's going to help and move forward our community that we have here in Glen County and within the city of Brunswick. And we know that there is the possibility of us committing, of this board, of this body committing $800,000 to our Rizley project that will be in partnership with the city of Brunswick, who also would like to commit $800,000 to this project. But one thing I do want to say briefly is, the presentation that was just before you with Ms. Ally Christensen, she is one of our partners for Coastal Georgia Community Action Authority, as well as Rise Rizley. And one of the things that Rise Rizley is all about is to have a place for our families, to have a holistic approach in order to be able to work through those issues that she's so vividly described to you guys on today. Now, with Rise Rizley, we are very much moving forward, Kevin, if you will come, if you will come on. But in moving forward, one of the things that we want to do is to talk to you specifically about how it is that we are planning to move this, to move this project forward. And so with that, I do have some brochures for you, but I also want to update each and every one of you on where we are in this process right now, to give assurances to each and every one of you that this project will take place, and it will take place successfully. And the fact is that in partnership with this body, with the contribution of the $800,000, with the contribution of the $800,000, and in partnership with us, that it will be a partnership that would actually be one in which not only would Glen County benefit from, but also the city of Brunswick as well, as well as our families. Because we know that if we provide the resources that are necessary for our families to grow and become strong families, then we know that our community will grow, our communities, our neighborhoods, our families, because strong families make strong communities. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to talk specifically about the plan that we have in order to make this move forward. Yes?
Ms. Hamilton, can you at least talk about the grant you got for DeFacts for Rise?
Oh, yes. Okay.
And how it has to do with some of the issues?
Okay. So back in, I believe that was in 2019, 2018, 2019, our coalition that we have, for our Rise Rizley coalition, we actually applied for a grant through the state of, through the Department of Human Services, DeFacts. And with that, we were one of the first, one of five organizations that received the Community of Hope designation. And that particular designation was one in which, at that time, at that time, DeFacts determined and decided that what we need to do is to have our communities within the state of Georgia determine what it is that our families need. It is best that, in essence, it's hard for someone up in Atlanta to be able to tell us what we need down here in Glen County. And so with that being said, they created the project of Community of Hope, in which they wanted the community to come together, that was nonprofit, business, government, all sectors of the community to come together to determine exactly what it is that our families need in order to provide them to support so that they could have, so that children can stay in their homes, and parents would not lose their children or be subject to having their children being taken from them because of the fact that they could not pay a light bill, or the fact that they were struggling in trying to pay their rent, or they just did not have enough income coming into the home. So with that, and with Hope 1312, along with all of our other partners through our coalition, when we came together to determine how it is to address generational poverty here in Glen County, we decided that what we needed to do was to create a place and a space in order for our families to be able to get to the services that they needed, and those services be accessible to them. And thus, it started down the road in trying, in acquiring the Rizley property from the Board of Education. And so what it is that we anticipate and are expecting to do there is to have a location where not only that we're providing those social services, those support systems that our families need, that Ally is talking, that Ally spoke to you about, but also to have it be an avenue for individuals to be able to increase, not only increase their education, but also increase their skill sets as it relates to job trainings. And then that way, these families are able to take care of themselves. They're able to provide for their families financially, and then they are not put in predicaments where they end up in a situation where they may, where they may have their children removed from them. But to her point, though, even though DeFacts is supposed to be a very strong partner in this, their lack of leadership, because of the lack of leadership, we have not had consistent leadership at the table from DeFacts in order to ensure that they are a partner. So, and that is a result of them not having, or should I say, going through so many different executive directors.
Kevin, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, I see.
That's what I was just going to check. I believe the presentation materials are available in your packet. You're also going to...
Are you going to put those, the three separate attachments, depending on which floor?
Vincent's going to make sure I do my job well. Vincent's going to make sure I do my job well. I've got to, sorry, just for the benefit of the conference. Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name, for the record, Kevin Krulwich with Henderson and Company, the principal of our company, Urban Henderson, unfortunately, could not be here today. I have been with the company for the past five years, but I have been in the community development and community revitalization space for about the past thirty years. I'm a CPA by training, so I apologize in advance if I talk about anything that sounds too much like an accountant. But I want to first thank Teresa and her organization for bringing us to the team that has been assembled to look at the impact that the redevelopment of the Rise Rizley campus can have, as she mentioned, for the families of Glen County. We have been hard at work for the past four months, going through the pre-development phase of the project, wherein we are gathering information to validate many of the assumptions that Teresa and her organization and the community first developed back in two thousand nineteen. With the advent of COVID and a pause in the project, we wanted to make sure that the assessment of needs and the spirit within those in the community that wish to address those needs were still properly identified. And so we've had a number of meetings within the community and faith, leadership within the community, all of which have been very well attended. From those meetings, as I said, we've been gathering information to put into our redevelopment plan. My role on the project is to create the overall process and structure for the redevelopment of the Rise Rizley campus. Just over four acres in downtown Brunswick, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the buildings, but the rich history of the property within the African-American community was something I was unaware of. Got down here and had the opportunity to meet some of the families, some of the retired teachers, and many of the people who really consider Rizley part of their legacy, and was surprised to find that it was generational. It's not just limited to the folks right around the campus. There's folks on the island, there's folks throughout the county and the region. Interestingly enough, the solar energy consultant that I met with, Live Oak Solar Energy, he said his grandmother was a teacher there. And I know the Historical Society just recently had a presentation, I believe it was a week or two ago, where one of the professors from the College of Coastal Georgia was giving a report on the oral histories that he's captured. And so there's a lot of reason why we want to get behind this project, more so than just the economic potential impact that it will have to the surrounding community, but for the lives that it can improve. I want to be respectful of time. Commissioner Neal, how much time do we have with the presentation? Because I can adjust my presentation content.
I believe we have about thirty minutes.
Okay, great. I want to use that and make sure we allow plenty of time for questions to ensure that we cover everything that's in it. So thank you very much for consideration within the agenda to move this up as well. The one pager that you have on the screen, and I'm going to try to do this maybe as well as... When we got down here, we realized that the commitment had been in spirit established to, as I said, Commissioner Booker moved eight hundred thousand of his allocation into the project, together with the mayor and the city of Brunswick, combining eight hundred thousand from funds that they've earmarked into the project. When we first met with Aaron Lempert in his office, we discussed the mechanism that would be most beneficial. My background, as I said, is as a CPA, and the specific tools that we hope to use to leverage the funds that the city and the county are making available are historic tax credits and new market tax credits by and large. There's many other components to the capital stack, which I'd be happy to address, but I want to start with the city and the county funds and why this, why this memo was developed. We realized that the draft of the memorandum of understanding that was first created did not address the desire within the development team to leverage new market and historic tax credits. So the structure that was originally proposed would prevent our use of those credits with tri-party ownership with the city, the county, and the nonprofit. You can't have a governmental entity or a nonprofit entity own the real estate. It has to be in a for-profit development entity, which can fall under the nonprofit, but we want to streamline the entity structure so that we take advantage of the municipal support, the nonprofit, and philanthropic dollars that can flow into the project, as well as the private equity. I want to speak to that a little bit.
Did you say it has to be a for-profit?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I'm going to come back to that here in just a second. And again, if there's any questions during my presentation, please interrupt me. I'm happy to address those at that time. We recognize that the Golden Isles Development Authority was statutorily created to specifically receive funds from the county, in this case, potentially the city, that can be used for economic development projects within Glen County. And so we've had some preliminary discussions and meetings, both with council and with the Golden Isles Development Authority, about their willingness to serve as the conduit of the city and county money. It intellectually makes sense. It complies with all Georgia statutes and requirements for moving municipal dollars into a public-private project, and most importantly, gives you the assurance that the dollars are going to be combined. It's not just your money that's coming to the table. We want to leverage that one point six, the eight hundred from you, the eight hundred from the city, together with about another nineteen million dollars of funds. And I'm going to talk about the makeup of those funds for just a second. But the reason this memo was drafted was to document why it is critical that we move the funds from the county to GITA, and similarly move the city funds at the same time from the city to GITA. There, GITA will enter into a development agreement with Rise Rizley to undertake the redevelopment of the entire campus. And we will be combining that source, the one point six, with all of these other buckets of money to really create a transformational project, unlike anything that's been seen in your community. Now, just again, a little bit of background. Henderson and Company is active throughout the United States in development projects for its own account, as well as consultation with other clients and nonprofits such as Coastal Georgia Area. The whole reason we exist is to take advantage of the economic tools and fiscal policy stimulus tools that are available to communities and bring those dollars and resources to bear. It really isn't about the dollars, and it isn't about the buildings and historic preservation as much. It isn't about the lives that have changed forever, and the residual benefits that the community as a whole sees through a thriving portion of their community brought back to life. If we were to have driven by the Rizley campus today versus fifty years ago, you'd have an entirely different perception of vitality. We want to bring back the light that that community always had available to it by housing the nonprofit Community Delivery Service Center that Ms. Hamilton spoke of on the Rizley campus. We've got a number of other very exciting things planned for the campus, but the structure of it is, as I said, largely community revitalization, historic preservation, and most recently, we've added renewable energy to the project, which will bring in stimulus dollars as well as tax credits for the solar energy that will be generated from the roofs, and it will offset almost one hundred percent of the economic, excuse me, of the utility bills that the project will generate, thus making rents for the nonprofits that house on the community much more affordable if they don't have to pay the light bill and running the air conditioner twenty-four percent. So first happy to answer any questions about why we are recommending that the county funds, similarly the city funds, move through GITA as an instrument and tool to leverage the rest of the public and private dollars that we want to bring to bear.
If we were to fund this, what would the upfront money go for?
Well, we want to work in concert with you to address your goals and ideas, because there have been different conversations about where you prefer to see the money. If I could illustrate the twenty million plus that we expect to spend, about seven hundred and fifty of that is in the pre-development phase. That's where you gather all of your architects, your engineers, your environmental consultants, your campaign council that we met with today, that's going to help us raise in excess of six million dollars here in the community. You put together the development structure and ensure that all of your assumptions are tested. All of the investor money that's going to come in is checked, checked, and double-checked, and it's critical that we spend the time during pre-development to address all questions and concerns. That's what we're working on now through probably the end of April, May. So what we'd like to do is harness some of those dollars for the pre-development phase. The other dollars could be tied to actual construction, brick and mortar, but we're flexible as to how we can create that. I do believe there have to be benchmarks and milestones along the way to demonstrate success before the dollars are released, and similarly show the impact of spending those dollars before we draw down additional dollars. So we'd like to see those moving along, Scott.
So, question was, what could the upfront money be used for? And I'm looking at your budget here. Pre-development of seven hundred thousand, soft cost of nine hundred thousand, that's the one point six million that the city and the county has pledged upfront. How would we see any returns or guarantees on that investment?
Yeah.
To safeguard the taxpayers?
Right. We would not draw down the full one point six at inception. What we would do is draw down a portion of that. Let's illustrate potentially the city or county funds being drawn down in tranches. Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty if we hit certain deliverables and milestones, and then a final three hundred at financial close. What we want to do is have one financial closing, where all the investor equity for the tax credits comes to the table, all the philanthropic pledges, loans, and other resources come into one institutional investment account. So your funds would be controlled by GITA, and ultimately would flow into that investment account, together with all the other dollars. So it's not like you're taking a risk and saying, well, we're going to put the money out, but we may not get anything to show for it. Now, we do in fact need to spend some of that money. And like I said, what we'd like to do is leverage a portion of the county funds and a portion of the city funds to get us through that pre-development phase. We already have some internal money, so the two hundred and fifty from you and two hundred and fifty from the city would get us through pre-development. It has been submitted, and the bill...
Commissioner Booker brought up that there was a grant and... Initial grant.
Yeah. Some of those monies have already been spent on stabilization and emergency repairs that were necessary during two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
And Teresa, what was the, what was the amount of that grant?
That was a total of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. If I think in your brochure or in one of our other presentations, which we can get you the details, about four hundred and fifty thousand was raised in the past three years. And as I said, most of that had been spent into the buildings in stabilization, emergency repairs. When we started the project this spring, there was about two hundred of that to work with. And we've been very judicious in spending that down. We still have approximately a hundred of that two hundred left in the bank.
Teresa, I thought that was one twenty-five for the state.
The state of Hope.
Yeah.
Yes, it was one twenty-five.
And the city has committed to this project?
Yes, I've spoken with the mayor and city manager. Mr. Duffy is here. We've also met with the city council to talk about, again, the structuring of the flow of those dollars into GITA matched with your dollars. We believe...
We have meetings scheduled, upcoming negotiations, developing, about some of the particulars of the project. We have... But we are still going through deliberations, and we'll be dealing with the community members upcoming prior to that December meeting.
Yeah, we have a working session planned with city commissioners for November twentieth, very similar to this structure. So what we're expecting is the appropriate due diligence, working on survey, legal and title work, a new Georgia, and is typical for all other projects that we consult on nationally. That same exact structure has been used elsewhere in Georgia, where projects involving historic tax credits have been done through the Economic Development Authority. And so it's a tried and true model, and we think it'll give you the biggest bang for your buck. But obviously, we appreciate and understand the need to demonstrate to the taxpayers that we're getting something for our buck.
And that was, that was going to be my next question. What other projects have you done around the country that has been carried out through fruition that we could, could contact, talk to about the success of the project?
We have a number of projects currently under development, and obviously a list of projects that have been successfully completed. We'd be happy to provide you with references.
If you do that, actually.
Yeah. And we're working, we're working in Birmingham, Alabama, working in Atlanta right now. I hope to be working in Dublin for the redevelopment of the Dudley Motel, which is an African-American hotel, one of the few places that travelers between Savannah and Atlanta could stay safely during civil rights here. So we are, we are working with the Georgia Department of Historic Preservation and the Georgia Trust. You mentioned grant dollars. More specifically than the prior money, we have applied for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the African-American Cultural Heritage Preservation Grant. That grant was submitted last week, and we are extremely encouraged by the initial review of that, and hope to announce in early January the receipt of those funds. We also just did receive word from the Georgia Director of the Department of, excuse me, the National Trust for Historic Preservation. They also have an African-American heritage grant. Max dollars are two hundred and fifty. We applied for two fifty. They have sort of soft committed and told us to expect one fifty. So we're going to be combining grants that we are seeking of both historic preservation nature and community redevelopment nature, together with our local philanthropic dollars, which Mr. Byer is leading that push. We expect to bring an additional five million dollars of local philanthropy to the project. So as I said, about twenty million dollars of leverage. And the first thing I would ask anybody who said, well, what do we get for this? The new market tax credit is probably the strongest economic driver that is available at the federal level. Eight dollars of private equity are raised in the project for every one dollar of federal savings. That is incredible leverage, when you see that kind of private equity flowing into a project for only one dollar of tax savings. The historic tax credits similarly bring five dollars for every one dollar subsidy. And that money comes into a project before dollar one of subsidy is granted. So it's an incredible leveraging tool, and it's used throughout the country for economic development, historic preservation, and community revitalization projects. And we certainly believe Brunswick and Glen County should benefit from those same programs.
If you would, circle back for me on the necessity for a for-profit to be the only entity by which you could move forward?
Yes, sir. It's a really good question. It might get a little accountant-wonky here, and we can provide you the technical answer, but in large and short, if the federal government and the state government, state of Georgia has magic tax credit, if they're going to give you that subsidy, they want it to go into a tax-paying entity. They don't want to subsidize a nonprofit. They don't want to subsidize a municipality. That's not their job. But by putting it into a taxable entity, it goes into a real estate, typically partnership, oftentimes legally structured as an LLC, and that is a taxpayer. It pays property taxes. It pays sales tax. It pays income tax, both at the state and federal level. And so the subsidy is under the assumption that they get their economic returns over time, as the businesses that are created by the redevelopment of these resources create income and jobs, which, you know, spends all sorts of taxes down the road. But it has to be in taxable entity.
So, explain to me, then, your Rise Rizley will have to charge the services to end up making a profit so that they can pay the tax, pay the property tax. They're going to have to charge their users a fee for those services that would produce profit?
If you think of it in just a traditional commercial real estate sense, tenants will sign leases that will give them the rights to occupy a portion of the campus. Those tenants, under the terms of those leases, will cover the cost of the operations of the property, as well as replacement reserves for future depreciation, those types of things. the property, as well as replacement reserves for future depreciation, those types of things. Our goal is to have anchor tenants, with whom we've had preliminary conversations, sign LOIs by the end of January for approximately 30,000 of the 50,000 feet that's on campus. Ultimately, our goal is to have space available for everyone in the community at just a contribution to cost basis. We're not going to expect all users to sign five-year leases because we know some of the organizations don't have the financial capacity to commit to an economic lease. But we are going to anchor the center with tenants that can pay rent. And obviously, after depreciation, those cash flows are taxable.
Okay. And then circle back one more time. We had, you know, our commitment a year ago to this through Mr. Booker's allocation was that our money would be last in, and I believe the city's commitment was similar to that. So this is a dynamic change from what our commitment was to what you're asking us to do. And we will need time to process that and evaluate it. And Commissioner Booker, I know you probably have comments, but I wanted to ask Ms. Duffy is if the city has any comments and insight from the city's standpoint, since you're nice enough to attend with us today, if you had any comments that you'd like to make regarding that. I know I'm putting you on the spot, so if you don't, that's fine. And if you would come up to a mic or Quincy, can you get Ms. Duffy? It's good? You've got it? Okay.
While she's coming up, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Is this project, can it be leaned?
Well, our goal is to have no permanent debt on the project, but if we have a commercial lender, they're going to want a first security position. That's typical in any type of investment structure or real estate, you know, you have a senior lender on the project. Typically, you don't have debt. Municipal debt is supported by a lien or mortgage for the simple reason that the tax credit investors don't want to be at risk of having to pay those credits back. And a foreclosure or any action against a mortgage would cause those tax credits to be recaptured. So we're talking about $10 million of money that we want to bring to this project that would be at risk if you didn't have standby and subordination agreements that say no lender can foreclose. So the benefit of a mortgage, if you're thinking, well, we'll tie up the property that way, you'd have to sign away all of your foreclosure rights. So it's not a vehicle that we would recommend.
So it's a net. But it could be. What you were explaining was like a debt secured debt. I think what Commissioner Thompson was asking is if there's not performance-
Yeah.
Then we could put a lien against our interest in the project at that point.
Let's speak to how we make sure and demonstrate that this is over time, that we pay the dividends that you are all rightly asking about. When we look at the economic structure that we're putting together, historic tax credits have to be in service for five years. The new market tax credits are seven years of tax compliance. So they won't even put their money in unless the financial guarantees, the strength of the guarantor, the strength of the entity that's standing this project up meet their requirements. So their money comes in with layers of due diligence and protection. There's been less than one tenth of 1% failure rate when you combine new market credits with historic credits. This is the history of the program since 1994. So the failure risk, because so many protections are built into this type of structure, it's almost inconceivable that a project doesn't go. Now, we all know tenants, common tenants go, and the ability for those tenants to continue to pay rent could be limited economically. So what we typically do on the front end is build up cash flow reserves. And those are funded cash flow reserves in case there's vacancy or some other reason why a tenant may not be able to pay their full share. Again, those guarantees and assurances are part of this structure. Ultimately, many of the deals that are done with development authorities have a reversionary clause in the deed that at the end of the five-year or seven-year tax credit compliance period, if they haven't delivered on the promises that they made at the outset of the project, you have the ability to take the project. So yeah, we would make sure and engineer all the safeguards and stop caps to ensure not only day one, but throughout the tax credit compliance period, you know, that the investment was protected and provided the results that we-
All right. And let's do it. Ms. Duffy, for me.
Good afternoon, and again, thank you, Chairman. I was just here to hear the conversation with the county in terms of what was going to be presented because we have not had a presentation directly to the commission, city commission. I was, however, encouraged that if we, you know, because we started this process trying to understand how the city and county could invest in this particular project legally. And I was encouraged to hear that they were working through the development authority because that's, you know, how certain projects have been funded over, I guess, my experience. So I think that is certainly an avenue we are interested in looking at. I think, as you all are, we need to do our due diligence on the success of this process and how, you know, we can put in some guarantees so that we aren't risking city money or county money in a project that may not come to fruition. So I agree with your efforts in terms of looking at, you know, how successful projects have been structured and how our money could be, I guess, leveraged for the other additional funding because, of course, we are less than 10% of what they're trying to do to make this project successful. So we'll be meeting with the commission probably two-on-two in a couple of weeks to go through some of the due diligence, as well as trying to see if we can get this to the finish line. But my thoughts were, you know, that once we got to the development authority, that there will still be some safeguards in place for the city and county before, you know, any money is spent. But that's kind of where we are right now. And of course, I think we all have a little homework that we need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. And Mr. Fallon, do you have any comments on?
Well, I'm just curious. In looking at your, some of the projects that you have done in the past, Benmore Hotel in Montgomery, Alabama, Prince Hall, Sonic Temple in Birmingham, and then Ramsey McCormick Building, and it's a similar projects, I believe. Have you received public money for any of those projects?
Yes. In Birmingham, the municipality has committed over $4 million to about an $18 million project. Now, Enslie is a severely distressed economic area and had been identified by the city as part of a redevelopment plan encompassing many blocks beyond the Ramsey McCormick project site. But yes, they have, their council's already voted and approved those funds. They've been in the project for about two years.
How was that structured?
The structure of the funds there, interestingly enough, the benefit of how that deal was set up is the monies could move directly to the municipality. There was not a prohibition, similar to the Georgia Charities Clause in Alabama. So they made a direct investment in the project. So we didn't have that added hurdle that we do here. Great question.
And Commissioner Booker, this is a project that you have brought forward from your allocation. I'll give the remaining time to you if you have any comments on it.
Well, a couple of things. One, I just want us to be mindful of why we're doing it. Because why it's a $800,000 from us, $800,000 from the city. That's real dollars from the taxpayers, but we're investing into taxpayers. And these taxpayers don't often get credit for what they contribute to the economy here because when low-income families who receive food stamps, when they get that, they go spend that in grocery stores, and they pay all the taxes associated with that, and they employ those people. And that's millions of dollars, but we never think about that, that they contribute that to the economy because we're always saying, well, they're looking for a handout. No. And these are the folk that work every day, two jobs, sometimes two jobs and a side hustle. So I want us to remember that when we talk about this $800,000 from us, but also the city to remember the same thing, that these folks are taxpayers. And just like we invest when Sam's come to town, there's some development on the island that's going to create jobs, these folks create jobs every day. And so that's the investment. So it's not just some giveaway at all. And the other reason why we need a firm like what Kevin represents is because if we don't do this, the impact on these families, we're talking about their lives, their children's lives, these are our families. And so if it's not done right, so ask the questions, get settled in your heart and mind about it. So when you take the vote, hopefully to support it, that you understand the importance of it. It's beyond $800,000 from us. We're talking about the lives of the families that we care about. And so I just want you all to remember that. I could go on, but I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker.
Pleasant remark.
Yeah, again, we just appreciate your time and interest in supporting the project. We believe this presents the county and the city with a unique opportunity to bring dollars that would otherwise not come to your community to rest here permanently for the benefit of law. We think that this project is ideally suited. The time is right. We're incredibly enthusiastic about what's going on, and we believe in our hearts that this is going to be successful. We wouldn't be here before you today as a deliberative body, asking for you to move this measure if we weren't certain that it was going to proceed, as Ms. Hamilton mentioned. So again, with all due respect, we appreciate your time. We respectfully request pursuant to county attorney and the appropriate parties drafting the appropriate resolutions and apper-tenant legal documents, that you have the spirit and the will to move this money to GEDA to allow us to combine it with all the other resources and get this project started.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner, anything else?
All right. I have one-
You already gave it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could get a couple more seconds.
All right.
The resolution, because our normal process is we kind of have a consensus, direct Aaron to put together something. You are correct me if I'm wrong. But then he brings it back to us. Do we, I guess, you're looking to have this done by the 7th of December?
Yeah, it's important from a timing perspective because we've assembled the rest of the development team, and we're beginning the philanthropic process. We're also, as I said, beginning to start raising the money at the federal and state level. We need to evidence the commitment from the local governing body that they are behind this project, and the local community wants to see this happen. You can imagine the perspective if you asked somebody from out of state or out of town to come in and say, well, we think you should get behind the project, but the local folks don't want to see that. We think by you taking the lead and pledging your money with, again, with all the appropriate protections in place, that we've got a great story to tell, that we're ready to go, to bring the rest of the capital together. And again, your money goes into a fund that feeds an investment account that is tied to all the other dollars. So it's not like it goes out the door, can't get anything back. You'd have the appropriate protections. If the deal blew up, if there wasn't tax credits leveraged, yes, you'd have reversionary clauses available to you. So we'll make sure that we get our Ts crossed and Is dotted. We really appreciate Aaron's leadership and help, similarly, Mr. Corey at the city, and obviously, all of you as commission members. We want to do this for you, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Thirty seconds. Don, do you have a temperature for the local dollars you want to share with us?
Thanks for putting me on the spot. I'm confident that this community will support this project because there have been other similar projects the community has supported. I'm further confident that because the number of private philanthropic dollars are roughly $5 million, 5.1 in the last numbers that I worked on, that we have the capacity within the community to provide that, particularly when it's seen as part of a $21.5 million project, that you get a $21.5 million end product as a result of a $5 million local philanthropic investment. Does that help you?
Thank you.
Yeah. Aaron, could you put together a synopsis for the commission, get it out to us so that and so that we could maybe have individual work sessions on this if we're going to move it forward? I think we need to get it into a synopsis. I think Commissioner Booker was asking if there was consensus to move it to the December 7th agenda. Mine is still, there's some questions that I'd like to be able to work through as far as how we would have the process, the right of decision if things don't proceed, to get it down into a concise, one-page, two-page kind of process, and then we can carry it from there.
I'd like to make sure the city's on board.
Right. And we won't know for sure, Mr. Tina, if the city is on board until you have your meeting, your work session on the 20th, correct? And there'd be maybe guidance and direction at that point to know if you're going to put it on your December meeting. We are. So if you could work with Brian as well to coordinate those efforts so that one's not spinning the wheels, the other one's trying to get traction. So if you would help us coordinate that and get to an informed decision. Thank you. We're only four minutes over. That was really good. We appreciate it.
We appreciate your deliberation.
All right.
Thank you for your confidence.
We'll blame Commissioner Booker on those four minutes.
Right.
Thank you again. And thank our engineering department for being patient with us as we go through that. And then item number three, and our last item for today, is to receive an update on our Gateway Project. And Jason Hartman, our engineer director, is coming forward with Eric and his department to talk to us. A lot of time to be excited on that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for us, for us to be able to present this on the Gateway Project. We met with you guys individually throughout this process, and we'd like to bring it together. Our consultant, Kimberly Horn, has been doing a study on the Gateway, has finalized their study, and we would like to give you an update regarding the different options on this predictive project. And I'll hand it over to Eric Bernard as I do that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Bernard, project manager for Engineering Services, Blount County. Going to go over in this presentation, just find a film study and give an update on status for everything, as well as present a staff recommendation for how to see forward next step with this project. So this project's been around, last, in 2021, we had the GWS perform an analysis, looking at several alternatives. Based on that, we decided to progress and look, take a deeper dive into it. And so Kimberly Horn, last year- And so Kimberly Horn, last year, uh, was contracted by the county to take a deeper look using the, uh, G dot methodology, uh, for the intersection control evaluation. And we can go to the next slide. So based on that, we progressed four alternatives. The four alternatives that we progressed after this, uh, that screened out all of them except for that we're currently looking at in the final recommendation. So the four are the flyover with roundabout, consolidate roundabout, traditional signalized intersection, partial displaced, uh, dual left turn. So we'll go through each one of these and take a look and go over a brief, uh, overview of those. Uh, then we'll get into the traffic study recommendation, uh, as well as the benefit cost evaluation that was done and the staff recommendation. Go to the next one. So before we get into, uh, this, uh, flyover option, uh, just kinda wanna talk about the existing, uh, configuration of the interchange there. So right now, we have a one-way operation and rotary style, um, uh, interchange, essentially a triangular rotary style interchange. And there's two, uh, basically problems that this, uh, project's trying to resolve. There's an operational problem, uh, of course with congestion, that's, uh, evidence of the operational deficiencies. And then there's also, equally as important, if not more, safety, uh, safety aspect of the deficiencies. So when we're looking at, um, you know, the analysis of the existing condition, what, what is the problem here? Uh, you take a look at the configuration with the merging that's required in this, um, configuration of the rotary style. And anybody who drives through this interchange regularly, uh, you know, has probably seen, you know, near misses, um, and a lot of congestion and just people, um, trying to change lanes, uh, against each other. Creates a lot of weaving, a lot of friction through this area. So that's only compounded once, uh, you get more and more cars into the system. Uh, then that's when you start seeing, you know, side splines, uh, rear end crashes. And that's all indicative of congestion-related, uh, safety deficiencies. So with the project, uh, you know, like I said, operational safety deficiencies. To solve the safety deficiencies, and you'll kinda notice on this one, if you look all the way to the left, there's four lanes.
With the corner, do you do any good?
Yeah. So you see over all the way on the left, the four lane configuration there with the yellow, yellow stripes. So that's, that's showing that we've got bidirectional two, uh, two-way traffic proposed, uh, which is different than the existing configuration. So for all these alternatives that are proposed, the ones that made it through the screening to solve that safety aspect of the problem, uh, we propose, or Kimberly, Kimberly Horn has evaluated, proposed, uh, with all the alternatives, changed it to two-direction, uh, flow. And you see that also on the bottom too. I think this laser pointer's out of battery maybe.
Yeah. Very good.
So that's, that's one thing for all alternatives that, uh, I'll just mention upfront before I get to the flyover. The, the other point to all of these is, uh, once Kimberly Horn started evaluating the, started evaluating the, uh, uh, operational deficiencies and collecting the traffic data counts, uh, what they found, once they looked at the origin destination data, is that most people are either coming from or going to the causeway, you know, off the page here to the west, and destined or, uh, coming from either Seattle Road North or Dem- Demery Road on the east side. So there's a lot less traffic coming from the King's Way direction. Uh, but when you convert everything to a two-way direction on all these legs, essentially what it does is bring most of the traffic to this, this intersection we're looking at, which is the intersection of Demery and Seattle. So any solution for the operational issues here is gonna, uh, focus heavily on this intersection. That's why you're seeing these slides. Uh, really, we're just kinda focusing on this intersection, what improvements are gonna happen with this intersection, since those other two nodes of the triangular area, um, although there's traffic going through there, there's not huge operational issues once you two-way everything. Right now, there are, because of the way the configuration is with the one-way. But once you remove that, uh, this is really the big, uh, conflict point for all the crossing traffic. So with that said, uh, as far as this particular alternative, this is the first, uh, alternative that was proposed, with flyover with the roundabout underneath. So just a overview of this, the, the blue lines are an elevated roadway. Uh, you've got a bridge structure crossing, um, the actual roundabout above the roundabout there. So in a scenario, a couple scenarios here, if you're coming from the causeway, headed eastbound on, uh, off of the causeway, going to Demery. If you were destined to go to Demery, uh, road, you'd stay in the left lane and then fly up over off that elevated blue section, go up and over the traffic of the, uh, roundabout. If you're coming off the causeway destined for Seattle Road North, you'd be in the right lane. Beer off to the right, enter into the roundabout, do a three-quarter turn, basically a left turn at the roundabout, and go up Seattle Road. So this one essentially, uh, eliminates the conflict of the heaviest traffic movements. And for that reason, this one actually performs the best, uh, operationally, um, and, and actually safety-wise, uh, because it's really eliminating a lot of conflict of the conflicting movements at that, uh, primary intersection. Um, so as far as the benefits, you know, this has great benefits to it. And this is actually the recommended alternative, uh, from Kimberly Horn. Uh, the downside of this alternative is the price tag. So this one, the initial cost estimate on this one is fifteen point four million, uh, construction cost. And so the project budget, uh, for this project's thirteen point nine. So obviously that exceeds that. Um, this cost estimates, uh, right now are a pretty high level. So they're based off of, uh, intersection control evaluation, uh, methodology I mentioned, where really they're just kinda using a, uh, you know, state average type, uh, data to kinda formulate these higher-level costs. There's no, uh, deep dive into the quantities, uh, you know, and really site-specific, uh, data. So, uh, that, that price tag, fifteen point four, uh, just based off of, um, you know, kind of staff's opinion, that's, that's actually probably why with similar projects in other places, like, you know, where they got a similar project, flyover, roundabout, that was done a couple of years ago. And that one's, uh, you know, twenty-three million in that range. So, uh, basically a little skeptical of the, the price that's, uh, that high-level cost right now that's currently, uh, anticipated. Uh, next one. So the next, next alternative, uh, considered is the consolidate roundabout. So this one's actually very similar to the, uh, flyover alternative, as far as it's got the roundabout at the center there, uh, just without the flyover component. So, uh, very similar, other than now, uh, instead of removing some of that, you know, traffic volume out of the intersection, all of the, you know, uh, volume is going into the roundabout. So, uh, you still get, you know, the benefit, uh, safety benefits of the, uh, two, two-way end traffic. And roundabouts in general are safer than in traditional intersections because they have less conflict points. Uh, one thing to point out about this alternative though is, uh, the previous, uh, roundabout underneath the flyover was a single-lane roundabout. Um, and so this one actually adds additional lane into the roundabout. So as you see, there's mostly a two-lane roundabout, actually a one-quadrant having three lane, uh, which receives the, the traffic coming out the causeway. So when I first looked at this one, I was a little wary because of the, I saw the third lane in there on that long quadrant. Um, and, and comparing that to our existing multi-lane roundabout, which we only have one right now, which is the Breereka Demery, uh, roundabout, and seeing how that operates, um, I was a little concerned. Although with this site, this one sets up differently. Um, you don't have driveways, you know, close by, uh, where you've got people coming in and out. You've got plenty of room for signage, an overhead signage, uh, to be developed well in advance for people coming off the, the, uh, causeway, coming into this intersection. Um, so it sets up a lot better as far as people being able to position as they enter. And really, that's, that's the biggest thing when you're talking about roundabout, getting in the right lane before you get there. So once you get to the roundabout, you don't really have to make a decision. You just stay in your lane and it kinda forces you to your right spot. So this one, as far as construction costs, it's got a six point nine million dollar, uh, uh, current cost estimate. And again, that's high level. Um, whereas flyover had the fifteen point four, so it's over twice as expensive. Uh, so this one's a lot more affordable, uh, option, uh, as far as construction goes. And the next slide. So the third option was a traditional signalized intersection. I think everybody knows, uh, what that's like, uh, just your traditional intersection with a, a light traffic signal in the middle. Uh, so the, this one does not perform, uh, well operationally. Uh, and it's also, as far as safety, you've got more conflict points with the traditional intersection than a roundabout. So it's not scoring as well on that either. Where the benefit comes on this one is the price tag is, uh, the cheapest out of the four that got advanced. So it's four point nine million. Uh, and then also your, your impacts essentially are, are less. So your environmental impact is a smaller footprint. So your environmental impacts, your right-of-way impacts, uh, and those sorts of, the utility relocation, those sorts of things are reduced and overall staging is gonna be, um, easier. Uh, next one. And then the last, um, alternative here is the partial displaced left turn. So this one, what it does is takes, uh, adds a new signalized intersection ahead of, uh, the primary, uh, intersection. So you see that traffic signal to the left there by the Demery Road label. So what this does is essentially take the left-turning vehicles out of the primary intersection and it synchronizes those lights. And what this is able to do is remove, uh, you know, a large volume of the left-turning vehicles from the primary intersection. So you don't have that same conflict at the primary intersection. Uh, you're essentially kinda moving, moving the left turns to a specific, uh, light that's, uh, synchronized with it. So the price tag on this one is seven point one million, uh, which is similar to the roundabout. This one has, uh, you know, a pretty big footprint as far as you kinda see that it's, uh, taken up a large swath on the northwest quadrant. Um, and then it has, uh, you know, uh, expandability, but, uh, only as much as you can extend lanes outside the intersection. Next slide. So before I get into the scorecard here, just kinda wanna explain the, uh, what you're seeing in the bottom right, uh, table there. The LOS is level of service. So in traffic engineering, uh, you know, they run analysis based off these alternatives. And so it's a traffic simulation that'll spit out outputs of, uh, expected delay at the intersection. And so they use that delay in seconds. So that's what you're seeing there in the graph or table. Uh, and that, they categorize it into different, uh, letter grades essentially. So it's like a report card where A is good job, you're good, and F is bad. And so when you look at, uh, the delay and that level of surface, uh, service that's associated with it, that kinda gives you a, a kinda quick and dirty view of how that intersection's gonna perform. So when you look at the top table with all those scores and all those numbers, those are the delay in seconds and the, you know, level of service that's assigned to them. So what Kimberly Horn did was evaluate three scenarios. They evaluate the existing year, which, like I mentioned, the project, uh, initially started twenty twenty-one. So the existing year on here is level is twenty twenty-one. So those first three columns are showing the existing, uh, analysis of the existing, uh, using this in volumes. And then the, uh, two columns in the middle are the base year, or also referred to as opening year, for twenty twenty-five. And then the design year is twenty years out from the opening year, which would be twenty forty-five in this analysis. And so based off of those, kinda going through this, you kinda see with the existing conditions, which is the first row, uh, and obviously we're seeing it now with the congestion, the backups on the causeway, is it's got across, across the boards with pretty high, uh, delay in seconds. Uh, when you look at the second option, uh, that one's scoring pretty well. It's got A's across the board. And so that is the flyover with the roundabout and that is the, uh, recommendation from the traffic study that was sent by Kimberly Horn. And then going further, you have the consolidate roundabout, which was that larger roundabout. And that one scores fairly well in the, uh, opening year, but drops off, uh, for the future years, the design years, you, you have it at F. And then the traditional signalized intersection, I mentioned before, doesn't perform especially well. Uh, just based off of the operational, uh, throughput on that one. And then lastly, the partial displaced left turn, which was that, uh, double signal configuration. That one shows, uh, some residual capacity. It's, it's able to move cars through there, but since you're kinda adding an additional signal, that's another signal you have to, you have to get through. So the benefit of, you know, the roundabouts is, you know, off, off peak hours. So all this evaluation is done in the AM and peak, AM and PM peak hours, which is the rush hours essentially. Um, and all other times of the day, you know, for a roundabout, you hit a roundabout and there's no other conflicting cars, you can just go through it. Whereas if you have a signalized intersection, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna stop at a red light likely, unless you get lucky all the time. So that's some of the benefit of a roundabout as well. So overall, the, uh, Demery, uh, flyover with the roundabout and the consolidate roundabout, uh, four, acceptably, at least in the opening. The next one. So again, uh, I mentioned that the flyover, you know, obviously performed the best overall and showed, you know, that it would be a good design for future years. Uh, the problem with the flyover though is that it's just cost prohibitive. It's, uh, like I mentioned earlier, you know, twice as expensive as, uh, the next option said. Uh, when you're looking at, you know, working, you know, with the budget we have and picking the best option, uh, and evaluating the benefit-to-cost ratio of implementing a solution here, uh, the consolidate roundabout actually performs, uh, the best when looking at a, uh, benefit cost of, of, you know, safety benefits. And so, uh, earlier in the year, we were trying to work with G dot to see, you know, if they would have interest in, you know, providing funding or partnering on this project. And so a lot of this analysis was done, uh, really to provide that information to G dot, to see if we qualified for some of their funding, for some of their programs. Um, turns out, based off the information we gave them, they were not, uh, willing to, you know, donate funds or, or, or partner the program. So, uh, we have the information though, based off some of that analysis that we provided them. And that's where we're getting this information. But really what this feeds is kinda giving us, uh, an idea of the best bang for the buck of what we currently have, which is what we've committed to the taxpayers, work within the budget and with the schedules of these projects. And the next one. So with that, uh, the staff, uh, after considering, you know, the overall, uh, analysis of the report and all the information provided, uh, to G dot, uh, really, right now, we're looking to recommend a hybrid approach to the consolidate roundabout. And so what that means is essentially going forward with the consolidate roundabout, which is the bigger roundabout, uh, but designing it in a way that will provide for a future, uh, capacity-adding element such as a flyover. So, uh, we're gonna move forward with that roundabout, but basically leaving the footprint space and setting it up for future, um, flyover or bypass of some sort. Uh, what that looks like, we don't know right now, but once we progress into the design phase, you know, and get more information, we'll, we'll be able to formulate that a little bit better. Um, while I reiterate that everything done to this point has been, you know, high-level analysis, um, with information, uh, that we have on hand. But once we get into design phase, we'll have things like survey and, and better information to go off of to make these decisions and, and do things for. So, um, uh, one thing with the consolidated roundabout, I do wanna point out though is that, you know, it didn't offer that long-term, um, solution with those Fs and the W's. know, it didn't offer that long-term solution with those Fs in the design year. And that's really the reason why, you know, if we go with that often, we really do need to plan for the future with another phase of the project essentially. So it's really almost like a phasing of the project. And then the last item with the recommendation is, at this point, we've got the study completed. So really, I think today, we're, we're approaching you guys to, you know, offer our recommendation and then also see, we get guidance from you all to, with Project Board, well, advertising for a project management consultant and a design consultant to deliver the project. So due to the complexity of the project and the bandwidth of the staff, we think this one sets up well for doing, you know, bidding it out to a project management consultant to lead the project management of it and also bidding it out to a design consultant to attract, you know, consultants that have experience with this type of design.
All right. Thank you, Eric. When, when we look, and I think we can look at your last slide on the staff recommendation or...
We wanted to show you an animation to kind of show that footprint. Here's the first and second slide, just to show what that trajectory would look like between us planning for a, it's called a, you know, the consolidated roundabout versus the flyover option for us to potentially, as Eric said, potentially do a hybrid approach where we can plan for the future with a flyover in mind when we're, when we're doing this design. So that would be something we wanted to show you with the, showing the difference between the footprints and how we can plan for that particular footprint when we're doing the design and working with our consultant that we're trying to select. And like I said, the, the intent is not to allow Kim Lee Horn, who did the study, to do the design as well, but to send this out to any engineering firm that would be interested in putting a bid on this for, for design. And that, that would be mine. And what other questions did you guys have? Sorry. Wanted to show that, to show the animation before we do.
The, if you can go to your staff recommendation or either the traffic study recommendation, that, either, either one of those slides. If you look at the existing condition failure rate at AM and PM of 769 and 711, that is seconds of delay. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So if you look at, at the consolidated roundabout in 2045, the failure rate of, of the grade L is at 451 and 393. That's not half of what the current condition is, but, but, you know, less than two-thirds. Even in 2045, it would be better than what it is currently as projected, but, but still doesn't mean, need a, a good grade, but, but it still wouldn't be as bad as it is now, even 20-plus years out.
Right. And this is, I do want to kind of mention that, you know, the data that's used for this, you know, right now is currently under heavy congestion. So whenever you do kind of do improvement, open up the floodgates, it actually allows more traffic to get there, whereas now it's kind of being throttled by the congestion. But yeah, definitely, there should be huge improvement even further.
And the other thing, when, when you had presented to us individually over the course of the last few weeks, we, we talked about the traffic flow coming in from King's Way not being heavy, but when these traffic counts were done and analyzed, how many people, and some of you from the island might know better than I, but how many people now turn and go up Frederica to Demery Roundabout and come out that way to avoid that bottleneck at where King's Way hits the, that, that bottleneck?
Yeah, I know, I've done that.
And is it, is it, was that part of any analysis that if we could two-way the traffic in all directions, would that divert more people from the south end of the island coming back in King's Way and going out versus having to go up and further impact the Frederica-Demery Roundabout and this roundabout?
Yeah, certainly. So whenever you do a improvement, you, you have a lot of demand. And so when you freeze stuff up, people kind of change their behavior, right, of what strip route selection and all that. With this study, you know, it was limited to this general area. So, you know, this study didn't incorporate the effects, you know, at the neighboring roundabouts or further downstream. But we do know it will have some effect on those things, you know. It's, it's all a network, right? So if you change something here, it's going to impact something there. The good thing is we have, you know, projects planned. This is, you know, Sea Island Road and Frederica, and we've looked into other improvements along Sea Island Road. And so, you know, it's all part of a network that I think eventually too, we're going to be focusing on doing a bigger transportation study.
That is part of it as well. And that's a good question, Jim, because most of the people that do live on that side of the neighborhood, King's Way, the fact is people that live in the left, they can go down Frederica, go to the circle area.
And also with this, I think any solution with all this is going to involve the stakeholders close by, like Frederica Academy does contribute. You know, when schools are in session, you can tell the difference between the congestion then versus when schools out. And with, yeah, other spots project for the Demery Road improvements, you know, we can look at, you know, down Demery, some improvements that we can do there to kind of...
I don't, I don't know if the study's been done on population centers as it, as it relates to the south end, middle and north end of the island. But you, you would think as dense as the south end is populated, that there's a lot of people that are now taking the alternative route to go up Frederica and, and, and hit Demery at, at that intersection. So I still have concerns, but I, I wanted to bring up one other thing that you guys brought up. And I thought really good outside the box thinking that at the individual session that we had is a left turn Sea Island Road flyover as opposed to a Demery flyover and, and those consequences. And the only reason I bring it up is if we go with the hybrid method, would that still allow us to facilitate that if the study proved that that would be a more viable option?
Yeah. Can you, can you go back to the, I guess, the main slide, the first slide? Yeah, we had originally talked also about doing a curved flyover potentially, and that would be as what Commissioner Neal was referring to, Chairman Neal. Yeah, as we, that's why we would like this hybrid approach. We're working within our budget and, and as we expand and see the traffic patterns, well, could we expand to a future flyover? And what would that footprint be as we're working with our designer? And, and how would, would it make more sense to do a, a curved approach, I guess, from the west to the north there? Or what, what, you know, where is our footprint and what do we feel best about? The ultimate thing is, are we accounting for the future in this design that we're working for, or is it going to constrain us by some way? So with that, you know, we would do some studies and, and figure out what the best approach would be with this footprint, because we, we did bring that up and we don't want that idea to die. It's, it's basically what, what would be the best for the future in this, in this area as we're looking at it. So that would be something that we work with our designer that selected for this particular project.
And do we have any population depth as to the sections of the, of the island now? That, that seems to surely be somewhere.
I would say just based on what I see. It somehow, I would take, the worst traffic is people coming onto the island. It's coming across the causeway. And so if we were able to take that traffic over and put that directly onto Sea Island Road, that would lessen the impact that, that traffic. It, it's mostly based, like you said, it's mostly based on, I think, how people either come into work or go to school. What we see is, like I said, the majority of that traffic is backed up, goes in that direction. Because the light that's synchronized there now, that comes across and goes off the causeway, and that goes down Sea Island Road, is about a minute. And the other, the other lights coming from different directions are, are fractured there, and it's still backed up.
Those are featured, uh, uh, numbers, uh, volume numbers. Those are developed, these growth rates. And part of that development, that growth rate is looking at census data and the past years and then trying to check that out. So there's a lot of data that goes into formulating, you know, the growth and what numbers were used to calculate those future years.
Eric, do you have a picture of this? Does it, is the traffic coming onto the island from the causeway still going right towards King's Way?
Yeah. You go to the other PDF. Go to the very, the other PDF. Should be another PDF. Yeah. Uh, I'm not sure.
That's okay. But, but does it still?
Uh, yeah. And so that's something that'd be evaluated during the design phase. If, so we've worked before with a neighborhood that's right there, as you come on to the island, to Yoclo, and they've, they've expressed a lot of concerns about the safety of that area, because people come at such high speeds off of the causeway, right past their neighborhood. So one thing they'll look at, especially because if there's safety concerns, we want to try to address those as best as possible. In the future condition, there's an option to either keep that as kind of a bypass. So anybody coming from the causeway going eastbound, if they want to go, say, to Pier Village, King's Way, they would just kind of bypass all that.
Yeah, stay right.
Yeah. But that's something that, you know, we look further into during the design phase and see if there's something we could either do to calm that speed down or, you know, whatever alternative we could do there. So that all depends on, on operation.
Eric, the chart, it has the time to look at it again. Right there, just curiosity, like, why does the consolidated roundabout time deteriorate out, you know, at 2045 more so than the traditional signal?
Yeah.
Why does it deteriorate?
Yeah, roundabouts, you know, once they reach a certain threshold, you know, they, they break down. So once there's a breakdown, you know, it's kind of a bigger breakdown over a traditional intersection. And so you see it, that residual capacity, that third column. If you look at that, it's only a 1%, 4% on that, basically being that, you know, there's not additional capacity to move cars through there for, for, over what it's servicing at that point.
Okay.
So, yeah, really, roundabouts, you know, once they kind of break down, they, they break apart. And so that's where, you know, if we move forward with this option, we really do have that plan for the future, you know, bypass in some sort to remove that conflicting movement.
But at inception, it's like six pounds better.
Yeah. And so initially, it's servicing. Uh, and like partial displaced left turn, that one's got better residual capacity. So you see how that one kind of holds stronger on the difference between the base year and the design year. And that's because it just has better capacity over the longer, but it just doesn't perform as well the delay, because, yeah, again, you ought to go through two signals now to get where you're going.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one more. Can you go back to the consolidated roundabout question further up the slide? I was just curious on this, why the, if you notice, Demery Road going off the island, so that's where there's a lot of traffic. It's, you can step and be backed up, that's lengthening down around to the, to the other roundabout. Do you know why the, why they would have merged from the two lanes from Demery as opposed to the way it is now, where you have the merge from Sea Island Road into two lanes from Demery? So the way that is now, you have those two lanes from Demery that were merged before you reached, the traffic coming off of Sea Island Road. And there's not a lot that comes off of Sea Island. Right now, they do merge two lanes off of Demery, so I'm just curious as to why that changed.
I think when you actually look at the turning movement volumes, the heavier volume is actually coming off of Sea Island Road. And when you look at the potential route north of the island versus on the south end or the east side there, the primary movement is actually going to be that movement from Sea Island Road.
Any other questions, discussion? Clear as mud. So, all right. Thank you, guys. Anything else? Anyone?
I just want to go over the cost again. So the cost that Kim Lee Horn gave us with the flyover was, so their estimate, Kim Lee Horn, we, you guys, based on some research that you, it's going to be...
Yes, we referenced, as Eric said earlier, a project down in Pensacola, Florida, that was a very similar looking project. Eric did some research. It was in 20, what did he say, $23 million for that? Uh, so that's something more, we could probably expect that a little bit more better than what was getting from the high-level proposal that Kim Lee Horn was giving based on studies rather than seeing the real world construction.
What was Kim Lee Horn basing there?
So that's through the standardized, you know, process for their intersection evaluation. You know, they have some high-level kind of state average type of costs that are in there. It's up-to-date data. It's just that when you have a project like this with complexities, that's not necessarily capturing the staging, the difficulty of the construction, those kind of things, and with the wetlands and everything through there. That's hard to capture. There's adjustment factors they put in there, so that is a play a bit. But I think it just needs to be taken with a grain of salt that, that estimate, it's not a detailed estimate, it's still at a very high level. So it's very likely that that's going to be going up once we get into more detailed estimates for this specific site.
Once, and also, I would like to think we tried to do this today. That would add cost too.
Yeah, man, managed traffic is going to be a huge, you know, component of this, of this project. Yeah, this, you know, time is money. So if you're able to close something down and build it, it's way quicker and way easier it's going to cost less, we're going to give you a better price. If you force work at night and no, you know, lane closures during the day from certain times, you know, you're going to really, that cost, the list starts going up.
How long will it take once we begin to complete it?
Honestly, I forget what the report suggested.
All right. Yeah, I think what we need to do, that, hopefully with that project management, is remove the higher project management, get some answers. But I think, Jason, you mentioned that the, Kim Lee Horn had mentioned 18 months.
And that's, that's construction. You know, the design phase is still going to be a good long time due to the permitting process. There's major utilities through here with the, you know, transmission lines. You know, there's just, it's going to be a complex project that's going to, you know, have to go through many facets and information outside agencies where you're at the mercy of their...
I'm just guessing, probably if you did a flyover, it would take longer than if you did the disparate roundabout.
Well, if we're designing it to accommodate a future, you know, structure, then really you kind of have to consider all the upfront and kind of get the clearance upfront for a lot of it. But yeah, once we have more information for, you know, delineations of wetlands and survey, that's when we really start formulating what is the best option here to avoid, you know, impacts mitigating some of those.
So design potentially 18 months and then construction? We don't know.
Uh, they have 18 months.
18 months, yeah.
Okay.
I have a text from Commissioner Fendig. He said he was unable to connect on Teams he's watching on YouTube. And he says, "The flyover is the only design that features a successful tra- traffic flow rate. Putting that choice as a no-go is a financial reality. 20 years from now, we will be sorry we didn't do it now. Just saying for the record is out of commission." I have read his text. Anything else?
So what's the, what's the funding difference between the flyover?
The flyover is 15.4. The flyover is 15.4 and the one we're recommending is 6.9.
But that's.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's the best.
It's the Kim Lee Horn.
Our, our key is to work within our budget that we have for this project and expand for the future by no means like as Commissioner Fendig is commenting on. But we're, we're trying to think for the future as well and not just say this is going to be a three lane roundabout here forever. We'd like to work within our budget now and, and have a successful project and, and think for the future on how we can plan for different footprints and, and not only just for the, how we're working now, but make this be a futurist project that we can plan for as well.
And what's, what's the budget?
13.9, that's SPOSS.
13?
13.9 SPOSS, that correct?
That includes the design and the construction cost in, in that, in that cost for 13.
I think when we first looked at it, that's the number we were getting looking at. That's why we put that much in. I thought we had put.
It was 13.9 and I think that was, if you recall, that was, we were working with Kim about that time to get that number. And that was, that was the early SPOSS.
And, and we figured some inflationary costs in that to get to that.
Anything else? All right. Mr. Turney, any, any, any for executive session?
All right. Then motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Foskey and expedited second from Commissioner Clark. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We stand adjourned. Thank you.